All right, everybody, thank you for joining us. Sorry we had some technical difficulties getting everybody in, but that's been solved. We'll call the order of the City of Desert Hot Springs regular meeting of the City Council and the City Council serving as the successor agency to the redevelopment agency board. This is May 19th, 2020, and we are be at video conference for a 6:00 PM regular session. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Betts.
President.
Councilmember Gardner.
President.
Councilmember Pye.
Present.
Mayor Proton Griffith.
Present.
And Mayor Metz.
Present. Our invocation tonight will be given by Matt Dudley. He is the pastor at Desert Hot Springs Christian Center. We're gonna put him in right now. There he is. All right, Pastor, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Honored to be with you all tonight. Let's take a moment and pray, shall we? Father, we thank you. We thank you that even when times are unusual and things are not as we expect them to be, that we can find truth and foundation in you and in who you are. So we pray, Holy Spirit, that you would lead our city council, our mayor, our city leadership through this time. You would give them wisdom as they make decisions to direct our city. And Lord, we do pray for an end to this coronavirus. We're not sure what that looks like, but we pray for an end to it. We pray, Lord, that those that are affected by the virus would be touched by your healing power. We pray that those that are currently fearful of the virus would find peace and solace in who you are. And so, Lord, we thank you. We thank you for those that are leading us during this time. We pray, give them wisdom and give us all a good sense of compassion toward one another during these harder times than usual. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you very much. Tonight, our pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilmember Betts. Please place your hand over your heart and join me in saluting our nation's flag. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you for that. Our next item will be the city attorney reporting on closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We do not have any reportable action.
Next item is approval of the agenda. Does anybody want to pull anything from the consent calendar? If not, do we have any public comments on the consent calendar?
No, we do not, Mr. Mayor.
With that said, is there a motion for the consent calendar or for the agenda to be approved? Move the agenda and the consent calendar together.
I move the agenda and the consent calendar.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I will second.
Motion by Mr. Gardner, seconded by Mr. Griffith. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Gardner.
Aye.
Councilmember Pye.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Griffith.
Aye.
And Mayor Metz.
Aye.
Motion passes.
At this time, move to public comments. At this time pursuant to the Brown Act, any person may comment on matters of general interest within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council not listed on the agenda. Under the Brown Act, the city council shall not take action on or discuss matters raised during public comment portion of the agenda that are not listed on the agenda. All comments should be directed to the city council. Shall not be devoid of any personal attacks. Members of the public are expected to maintain professional courteous decorum during public comments. Do we have any public comments?
Mr. Mayor, we did get a registration from Brad Anderson, but we do not see him as an attendee at this time.
Okay, if he pops in, let me know. Then do we have any other public comments?
No, Mr. Mayor.
All right, move on to city manager's report. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As we do every week, we have a few reports to provide to the public. Dory, can you start off with the COVID-19 report?
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Mayor, City Council, good evening. So as many of you all know, and I'm sure many in the community know, Governor Gavin Newsom did release some additional or updated guidelines yesterday. Previously, there were several parameters that were in place that cities, I'm sorry, counties would need to achieve in order to move further along into Phase Two of the reopening for the county and in essence, the state of California. And there's been some positive news in the updated parameters that were released yesterday. I had an opportunity to speak with a representative over at our supervisor's office who indicated that those new parameters that are in place, that the County of Riverside is currently either meeting or exceeding those parameters, which means that we are one step closer to being able to move further along into Phase Two. So at this point, the County of Riverside is working on the attestation that they will be sending to the state that shows that the county is compliant and ready to move further along in our reopening plan. And so we are waiting approval once that's sent from the state so that we can move that along. So I will continue to keep the community updated. We can continue to thank them for complying with the current stay-at-home orders that are in place and certainly understand, you know, their desire to get back to life as we knew it pre-COVID. So we appreciate your patience and we will continue to keep you updated as we get more word from the supervisor's office on next steps for reopening. Thank you, City Manager.
Thank you, Dory. Chief Henson, can you update us on the COVID-19 testing site here in Desert Hot Springs, please?
Okay, the testing site is still ongoing from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM Tuesday through Saturday. We're starting to get test re- testing open. It looks like Saturdays, there is a bunch of openings. Last Saturday, May 16th, we've had 96 appointments that were open. They tested 36 Tuesday. They tested 101 and they had 31 appointments open. They test 132 a day every five minutes, so it's available. You can get same-day appointments. You can make appointments online at the following email address. I'll go slow. HTTPS colon backslash backslash LHI dot care backslash COVID testing. Or if you don't have a computer, you could also call in at 888-634-1123. Once again, it, the testing is at the LaZana Community Center, 10-800-WESTERROYAL. It's right in the middle of the park. There's plenty of signage out there and it's actually going really well. We've had no problems out there.
Thank you, Chief. I greatly appreciate it. Danny, can you update us on Palm Drive? Also, the new entry sign, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. City Manager, Mayor, councilmembers. Palm Drive, Phase One, that's the one from Community of Insurance, it's a two bunch palms. The contractor is actually working on the final punch list and will continue to work on those items until it is complete. Phase Two is currently ongoing. The subgrade and the asphalt was removed and replaced last week. All sections passed compaction test and new material was installed. Grinding began yesterday and will continue throughout this week. We also have some areas that will be removed and repaired and fully patched for the next two weeks. The final lift of asphalt will follow that work and the final concrete work will follow the asphalt as well. The entry monument, the construction entry monument, which is a northwest corner of Palm Drive and Palm Road, began today. So if you drive out there, you can actually see the entry monument on its way to be constructed. It will be completed in the next two weeks. That concludes my reports. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Danny. Real quick, Dory, you have a report on the Kmart parking lot?
Actually, I've got that one.
Okay, Luke, go ahead.
Yeah, so as you know, the Royal Emerald had put in a temporary fence to secure their location at the old Kmart building. And while doing that, they blocked the middle entrance off of two bunch palms and this created a traffic flow problem because people were not able to exit the parking lot and head west. So they will be moving those barricades away in the next few days and they're also going to be working with city staff to engineer the traffic flow through the parking lot to discourage drivers from cutting through to avoid the red lights and speeding through because that's also been a problem. But the barricades that are currently keeping people from exiting the parking lot and heading west will be removed in the next few days.
Thank you, Luke. I appreciate it. Now I'm going to our finance director, Jeffrey. Can you give an update on our budget, please?
Yes, so as of May 15th, the Consolidated General Fund has received $15,268,000 revenue and spent $18 million, $18,602,000 in expenditures. So actually, the city will be receiving several major revenue sources in the next week. We expect to get the sales tax advance payment, the franchise fees, triple flip BLOF and the property taxes. The upcoming amount for the amount for the upcoming sales tax thing is actually going to give us some information on whether any businesses in the Desert Hot Springs are taking advantage of the 90-day deferral plan and which means they won't be able, they don't have to pay their first quarter taxes until July. And if our projections for sales tax revenue this year will need to be adjusted. We also may have to do some, depending on when we can open up hotels and vacation rentals. If they're not, those restrictions are not eased sometime in June, we'll have to come back with further reductions in our estimated transient occupancy tax revenue. On a good note, though, the cities, the cannabis taxes from dispensaries are going to be exceeding our budget estimates. We estimate it to be 1.3 million. All the revenue received through March is 1.265 million and we still have three months remaining to be collected. So and according to some of the dispensary staff that we've talked to when they came in to pay their taxes in April, business for the month of April hasn't been very good. So I believe the higher than estimated tax revenue from the dispensaries will help offset any additional revenue productions from sales tax and transient occupancy tax, depending on the severity of the cuts we need to do. At this time, we're keeping, still keeping the same expenditure reductions measures in place. And then until I have more information on the sales tax and TOT revenue, I'm still estimating the ending fund balance for the general fund at 6:30 2020 to be over 10.9 million. However, as more information becomes available, I'll report a revised ending estimated fund balance. Also, at May 15th, the cash balance for the consolidated general fund is over 8.8 million, which it's almost $3 million available for operations. We've got 3.7 million in reserve for natural fiscal emergencies, 750,000 reserve for future capital use, and we have almost 1.4 million in the emergency reserve fund funded by the marijuana revenues, which at the end of fiscal year 1920, we're still estimating $950,000 to be transferred into that fund. As for the remainder of this fiscal year, the city's revenue consultant, HDL, estimates that the COVID-19 measures will have a minimal effect on our property tax revenues. Even though the governor, the governor issued an order for go issue order to executive order for property owners to have those penalties for late payment waived. They actually must apply to the county to be and be able to prove a hardship related to COVID-19. So then property and property owners that already delinquent before March 2020 and those that have property taxes paid from an escrow or inbound account provided by their lender do not qualify for this program. So our so those and the revenues the city receives from these panels of interest are a small amount. So it's, it's going to, it's not going to be much. It won't be, it won't be much of a revenue loss and then it won't be, we won't have a cash flow issue. The city is part of the TETER program, so the county is still honoring that program where we will still be forwarded all the funds available to us for this fiscal year. For fiscal year 2021, we're, HDL is estimating a small impact to property tax revenues and that's based on the property transfer tax due to reductions in sales, leading to changes in ownership and also reduction in supplemental taxes because of less development, be less increases in value of the property. The assessed values were already determined in January 2020 and it's not, which determines the fiscal year 2021 property taxes. However, if the shutdown, the shutdown is prolonged and prompts significant foreclosures and sales price reductions, the implementation of, they could implement Proposition Eight to reduce values, to reproduce the assessed values. If that happens, that means our property taxes will be reduced, but the potential for these reductions won't be evident until over the next four to six months. For the upcoming 2021 budget, that includes reductions in the property transfer taxes and supplemental property tax revenues as I've discussed before. And we are city staff working on to have that ready and brought to city council for the June 2nd meeting.
Is that it, Jeffrey?
Yes.
Right, as you anticipate right now, if nothing else changes, we're looking to balance the budget at the end of the year with that surplus that you discussed, correct?
Yes, well, looking for the budget, this fiscal year budget at the end of the year having a 10.9 fund balance for the general fund, 10.9 million fund balance for the general fund.
And balancing our budget, not going into deficit spending.
Correct.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, at this time, we're going to go back to public comments. Mrs. Suriyano, you think you might have Mr. Anderson on the phone?
Yes, we have someone that's calling in with a phone number that I think is Mr. Anderson who registered to speak under public comment. Mr. Anderson, if this is you and you're calling in, if you dial star six on your phone, that'll unmute you.
Have I unmuted now?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't have to do anything. It did it all by itself.
Okay.
Thank you. My name is Brad Anderson. I live in the City Ranch from Mirage. I wanted just to take a moment of your time to talk about the mosquito and vector control district today. I don't know if you're aware, but I am, that the mosquitoes are really bad already and they're very active in the larva stages throughout my city and throughout the areas I've looked at. And, and my concern is that the vector control district is poised to raise assessments again this year on all tax owners or all property owners. And, and I just know the administrative from the last four years that I've been involved with them. They've, they've lacked in the professional standards to actually manage that operation to the point where they can control mosquitoes in this valley and the diseases that they carry. So I would, I would urge anybody that's listening to go in their own yards and dump out any standing water and do everything that you can do on your properties and hopefully the vector control district can do the rest. But anyway, that's all I have to say about that and thank you very much for letting me talk. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Anyone else, Mrs. Suriyano?
That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Move on to council, mayor and councilmember comments. Start with Mr. Betts today.
You need to unmute.
I'm unmuted. No?
Yep, you're good now.
Thanks. Just, I'm going to be short tonight. There's, I mean, everybody's heard all this and know where we're at. We're 61 days since May, March 19th, when a lot of businesses were ordered closed. And I was just reading online before the meeting that there's talk about going out as far as August 4th, which is 130 days, 100, if I got that right. And, you know, we've got a lot of small business owners out there that are really hurting from, from this shutdown. And so I just want to encourage the public to the extent that you can, the businesses that are open, go visit them. To the ones that are still closed, you know, the city is working really hard. We're all working really hard to get these things to get to the point where we can safely open. And I just, my wife and I have a hair salon and we've been closed for 71 days. We shut down 10 days early. And I can tell you this, you know, it's tough when you're losing this income. And we're okay, but there's a lot of people out there that aren't going to make it. I saw on the news today that IKEA has filed for bankruptcy. And there's a whole lot of businesses out there. They're going to be struggling. It's ironic that over in Arizona and some of these other states, there's just open and maybe, you know, they'll dodge some huge economic losses. Who knows? Maybe some of those businesses will recover, but I just want everybody to be very aware, it's a very tough time for a lot of businesses out there. And, you know, if you can go to one of the local restaurants and pick up a meal, maybe some of us have gotten out of the habit of doing that. It makes a big difference. I went down to, it's Taste of India, not to plug them, but some really good food down there. And all the restaurants that are serving food would really appreciate you making an extra effort to get out there and support them. They need it. Sorry, no haircuts for a while. We got a lot of people talking, why doesn't the city open up? And, you know, the quick answer is the city can't tell somebody who has a hair salon or a restaurant that serves alcohol or a bar to go defy the state because those businesses would end up losing their license by the state. They have state-issued licenses and and of course, we as a city council have a concern for the safety of everybody. And then, you know, the governor's made clear to the counties and cities that have defied him that emergency relief funds that are going to be very necessary, they're coming out of Washington and distributed through the state, we could be in jeopardy of losing those. So I know some people out there, I've been on social media, we don't want to get tough, just go ahead and open up. And, you know, it sounds good. Supervisors went through that discussion, but it's, it's not practical to, to just take a irresponsible view that we're just going to open up because it's got very significant consequences. And talking about consequences, I'm happy to hear our budget report. I listened to all of five hours of Palm Springs council meeting on the budget, their presentation on Monday. And while we're not Palm Springs, they certainly are a draw and an attraction that impacts all of us, everybody in the valley. And they're not looking at very rosy numbers. Their best guess is $47 million deficit next year out of $120 million budget. You know, before they had $120 million revenue and they spent $120 million. Well, now they got $47 million less than that, or it could be as much as $60 million, depending on how long it takes to open up. And that's going to put a real crimp on things. I'm anxiously waiting for our city to get us those numbers. I want to thank staff for the meeting I had today and they were able to give me some numbers on what we're looking at. I think it's safe to say we're going to have a reduction. I think as we learned the last time when we went through this, that numbers are going to change frequently. And that's necessary because the staff just can't pin a number down and have it be the same number every, every time you look at it. It's a moving target. And I'm sure the mayor will remember when we were going through that the last time and Councilman Pye that people say, well, wait a minute, the number was this. And then, you know, the next week or the next month, it was something different. And that's just the nature of the beast. So, but I'm confident staff is getting a good handle on things and getting us good numbers. I'm just waiting to see the target I want, what number I want to see is what's our revenue going to be for next year? And then we go from there and see, okay, now what do we have to do? But I think it's safe to say that we're probably going to have some cuts. I see La Quinta just announced they've got a $3 million deficit and they're having to make some cuts. So it's, you know, it's, it's a difficult situation. We were going from a booming economy and everybody planning to have a wonderful, you know, next year. And now obviously, it's very tough, not only for the city and having to make some adjustments, but also for a lot of the residents out there. So same thing as before, what's really going to help is if all of you out there watching and in the city shop local and we have gas stations here in town and we have some that are nearby that aren't in town. Learn where your gas stations are. It's really easy for you to make a decision to buy your gas in town. I know some of you complain there's stuff that's not here in town that you'd like to see. But really, make the effort, go to our hardware store and sit across the freeway, get gas here in town. All of this is going to make a big, big difference in what we're able to do as far as services to the city. But I'm really happy to see that I don't think we're getting anywhere near what we saw before and I don't think we have the magnitude of the problem that Palm Springs does. I've got some meetings coming up, nothing I think that impacts the city significantly. Sunline and Public Safety Committee, so I'll just spare the report on those and get to that next week. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Pye?
As Councilmember Betts stated, we're waiting for the governor. The mayor, along with other mayors, have pushed, well, shouldn't say push, but pushed the county to make the county more regional. And so we're waiting for the mayor and we're waiting for the governor. And then we have to wait for the county. However, we're ready to open and to open up. So after waiting on those, we'll be ready. And we've already set up plans, so you won't be waiting on us. I attended the MSWD meeting. They approve a resolution to collect sewer fees on the tax roll. This is similar to what we do. They also passed a resolution recommending approval of Skyborne Development, a partial assignment and assumption agreement. So that means we do have building happening in the city. Affiliate project is continuing. Affiliate project is about mentoring students here in Desert Hot Springs. And I attended last week a training meeting and they're expecting to start in October. And lastly, I want to say congratulations to all of our students, high school, junior high and elementary. And there was a, I'm not really into athletes, but there was a athlete that stated that as much as you have gone through, through this semester, you're going to be good for us. And on May 22nd at 7:00 PM on KESQ, I'll be looking for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of three things to report on and I'll echo the comments of Councilmember Pye. Living here across the street from the high school, I got to see them lined up the other day to get their cap and gowns in it. It's sad that they're not going to get a real graduation. I do hope that the, that the school district reconsideres that and has something for them later on in the summer when, when all this is over. And I'll echo what Mr. Betts said too. I'm very happy about our budget numbers. I never thought that I would ever say that I'm glad we don't have so much TOT in our budget as we do this year. My colleagues in Palm Springs are really struggling, as are all of the other valley cities. And they're a little bit envious of us that we're not in as near a bad shape as they are. It's going to be tough. It's going to be tight. It'll be a little scary, but I, I really don't see us having to face those drastic, drastic cuts that Palm Springs and some of the other cities are going to have to deal with. I had meetings with both the Coachella Valley Conservation Commission and the Coachella Valley Mountains Conservancy. Both agencies last week took some action to conserve almost 400 acres of new land in and around Desert Hot Springs from Mission Creek to Willow Hole and as far out as Thousand Palms Canyon as all as part of the multi-species habitat conservation plan. And the CBMC, the Mountains Conservancy Construction Project on our new Long Canyon Trail is moving ahead. They've installed significant additional signage, which unfortunately, people continue to ignore, talking about shooting and dumping trash up there. But they've also begun grading out the parking lot and the restroom site at the new trailhead. We're waiting on some final permission from the Metropolitan Water District of Southern California for permission to cross the Colorado River Aqueduct there. The Mojave Desert Land Trust is starting construction on the upper trailhead in Yucca Valley now too. And trail improvements and construction will begin when we can get volunteers out there to work on it, given the closures of the pandemic. But we were really hopeful to have a ribbon cutting and trail opening later this fall. And it's going to be an absolutely spectacular trail winding nearly 17 miles all the way up Long Canyon, cutting in and out of Joshua Tree National Park and San Stone National Monument. It, I think, will be a very big tourist draw to the city and bringing people over here for the first time and enjoying, enjoying our desert. And finally, the Coachella Valley Mosquito and Vector Control Board met. The good news is that it was a much less wet year this year and the winter was much more, much drier. The good news is that it was a much less wet year this year and the winter was much more, much drier. And that broke all records last year. Bad news. Is that mosquitoes are starting to come out, but we do have our aggressive treatment plan in place and. And we're not anticipating as bad a year as we had last year. But some additional bad news is. Murder hornets. I know you've seen stuff in the media about that. That's. If COVID isn't quite bad enough, there's a lot of buzz. And joke about these Asian giant hornets. They live underground and hides, yellow jackets do, and. They're very large, about an inch and a half, two inches in length. And if their nests are disturbed, they'll defend themselves by stinging. And now that I, you know, scared you to death. The good news is that they've not been sighted in California at this time. We don't know if they'll be found in the future. They've only been sighted up in Washington State. But if you do think you've seen an Asian giant hornet. Probably contact the Department of Agriculture for the state. They're the ones that are tracking and reporting any sightings. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith.
So I have, I have a bunch of stuff here and it's all numbers, so I have to read it, but. Have attended several Hot Springs Business and Trade Association meetings regarding reopening guidelines right now. We had one on. Risk and mitigation and we're looking at waivers to. Have for businesses to have customers sign. What they don't, we don't want is we don't want people to be liable if for some reason they. Contract COVID nineteen because they've been exposed. And so we're looking at some templates that can be tailored to different businesses. That they can have their guests or, or customers sign. To kind of reduce some of that liability. One issue that is in California is workers' comp, which if someone is sick from work, is assumed they will. They have caught it at work and they can apply for workers' comp. So there's a lot of liability issues that are floating out. I know there's tons of task forces. I know that the Chamber of Commerce has one and they just sent a letter out today to the county for various things. Attended a C-VAG Economic and Environmental Resources meeting. Two big things on that. One was in fact about these task forces and. As councilmember Betts has discussed. The prospects of reopening. I know that the county has sent letters to the state to try and get us through. The stages faster and we are on our way to do that. One of the things that C-VAG is looking at is actually reaching out to the county to try and make us a subregion because we are. Because of the past, we are relatively separate from the rest of the county and. Statistics and numbers that work in Riverside where it's much more close and, and more dense are not the same as us. So what we're looking, they're looking to do is try to get a subregion. Designation so that we might actually be able to move a little bit faster just in the county as a whole. Another thing is they talked about CV link. So they do expect some construction this June and July to start in Palm Desert. They have increased the number of miles they expect to complete this year. I know they have requests for bids out for the Palm Springs portion and also some Indian, Indio portions. Also attended a Desert Hot Springs Family Alliance meeting with councilmember Pi. And this was for the Glow Up. Program. And I lost my little thing with the hashtag, but I think it's hashtag DHS Glow Up. They had some really interesting numbers. It was only about a week, week and a half old. Painted Hills increased their engagement rate twenty three percent to seventy five point six two, which is a pretty good participation rate. Desert Springs thirty four percent increase up to sixty two percent. And Desert Ha- Desert Hot Springs High School increased their engagement fifteen percent. They are actually giving prizes for people who are increasing the most. In terms of their, their performance and their engagement. And they are accepting donations from businesses or individuals. You can go to, I think it's on cvportal.org and. Donate if you'd like some gift cards, In-N-Out gift cards seem to be a big thing. That they're giving to these students for these contests. And. If you do do that, you want to, in the remarks, you just want to put hashtag DHS Glow Up. And that is all I have for tonight.
Thank you. My report tonight, I'll start off with Mr. Betts. I believe you were appointed to chairman of the. Airport and I know I got it wrong, Airport and Land Use Commission. Is that close enough? All right.
Close enough. Very good. Thank you.
He represents the city and the county on there. So congratulations to that. I attended meetings with the county supervisor and. Getting updates as Doria alluded to earlier during her comments that the county supervisor's office has been keeping us updated. On a regular basis and they've been having mayor and city manager meetings on, trying to have it on a regular basis as information is available to us. We plan to give another update to the community sometime this week. We're targeting Thursday as the information. Changes daily and it's very fluid. We have to be, we want to make sure we get the proper information to you. So we're compiling all that right now. And hope to have that all set for Thursday. We'll do a community update again on where we're at. Attended a lot of Zoom meetings. Always enjoy when I'm invited by the interactive Desert Hot Springs High School to give updates. They have about thirty minutes and they give me five, six, seven minutes to talk about. What's going on in the community and, and ask questions. So I wanted to. Say thank you to Rotary for allowing me to do that. Riverside County Transportation Commission had a meeting this last Wednesday, but did not, not much of it pertained to Desert Hot Springs. So I won't bore you with the details. The only thing that would caution you about. Is there a lot of construction projects going on in Riverside County, especially on the western Riverside area? So if you're, if you are traveling through Riverside County and you're traveling to the rest, west county, be very cautious. People have not been adhering to the speed limits and we at the Riverside County Transportation Commission have put more money into enforcement. They've actually clocked people at over a hundred miles an hour going through construction zones. This is very dangerous as construction workers are essential workers and we know that a lot of people are on the freeway right now. So people are driving faster. So there's a lot of enforcement going on. And they gave numbers, which I don't have in front of me, but gave numbers on how many tickets they gave out. Over a certain time period. It was staggering to see these speeds limits that people, or speed that people were, were traveling. So please be careful. The Highway sixty through Beaumont to Moreno Valley is still under construction. That is one of the areas they're enforcing along. Along with the fifteen freeway and a couple other smaller projects. So be careful if you're out there and you're traveling. I met with the Palm Springs Unified School District to talk about different avenues. When it comes to our graduation, we've had a lot of questions about our graduation. I think a lot of you understand that we do not govern the school district that is governed by the board of directors and our representative, John Girardi, joined me. With our city manager and assistant city manager. And. The principal at the high school. Principal Cota and our superintendent, Dr. Sandy Lyons. And we talked about what they're going to be doing and we hope later this week to be able to make some announcements on where the school district is going and what they're going to be trying to do for the graduating class of two thousand and twenty. It's, it's obviously disappointing to everybody, but their, their hands are tied as much as ours are when it comes to COVID nineteen. If you haven't. Right now, what has happened is they've been given a package and they can, they have yard signs that have gone up in their yards and. They've been given their cap and gowns to take pictures and have a virtual. Graduation, but they're trying to do more as, as things start to loosen up and we'll see how things go in the future here. But with that said, there's not much we as the city council can do, but help support the school district on the decisions that are made by their board of directors. And that's what we'll continue to do. But we hope to have better announcements this, like this week by Principal Cota on some of the things that she's trying to do. We do want to, we do want to confirm that the valedictorian will still get their street name after him as we have done every year. It'll be obviously a very small ceremony for that individual. The valedictorian this year and the, the two valedictorians from last year will receive their signs. As the school district sees fit to do that as we deliver those to them. We, we joined, my wife and I. Joined a Facebook page. I believe it's called Coachella Valley Seniors. And we adopted two seniors from Desert Hot Springs and you can still do that if you choose to, if you're on Facebook. And we were able to stop with those two seniors and give them gifts and say thank you for, for doing what they did. They're both going to college. We were very happy with them. And saw their stories and their parents put them on there. So if you really want to give back to the seniors of Desert Hot Springs, that's an opportunity. I know our police department did it for a senior. That was pretty awesome. They all showed up and, and gave a basket and, and showed up in their police cars and. And I think that student wants to go into public safety. So it was really cool to see a lot of people interacting in that. And you can catch those on Facebook if you need to. Or send me a personal message and I'll try to get you a link. This week we zoomed with the faith-based organizations and the food programs in Desert Hot Springs. Again, I want to say thank you to everybody. I've been doing this weekly. We went to bi-weekly and we'll continue bi-weekly throughout the COVID nineteen and then hopefully monthly. We've actually put together the Rotary Club, faith-based organizations and our food programs together to talk about how they can work better together and it's been working. We've actually started a, a program that's actually been serving people at their homes that don't have vehicles. So seniors that can't get out and families that can't get out. Also the school district's involved because they serve lots of kids in our community. And so it's been really a great collaboration. If there's some program where you're part of faith-based or you're part of a program and you want to be part of that, let me know. And we'll get you in on that meeting. That's, Ms. Pi and I. Participate in that bi-weekly that we had our meeting today. So it'll be another meeting in two weeks. Trying to read my chicken scratch here. I wanted to say thank you also, our congratulations to the junior ROTC program. Each year they have a, they have a, a ceremony which they give gifts out. And they are able to. No, shouldn't. No, okay. Don't get the details about it. Jan's giving me cues here. I just wanted to say congratulations to, to the class that's, you know, and thank you for your service to our community. I know each year you have a celebration. So more to come on that. And then the last thing, I just wanted to say, there's, it's always tough as elected officials. To balance public health. Businesses and the, the better good for our community. And I don't know if you know a lot about our struggles each and every day as a city council and our staff. On how much we struggle each day trying to make sure we make the proper decisions for our community. We have to enforce the laws. We have to enforce our ordinances as the best we can. But we have to work every day to balance that. So the state will understand as, as Doria talked about earlier, to relieve. These orders so that we can get businesses back open. It, it's heartbreaking every day to see people struggle and that's where we try to balance. What is the better good, opening businesses or public health or, or how do you do both of them at the same time? And I believe there's great plans out there that have been developed. And the, and Coachella Valley's mayors have been working closely together to make sure that we isolate the Coachella Valley away from the rest of the county. Because our numbers regionally are great and we've been doing a great job. And I want to thank you, our extenuants, for doing such a great job on making sure that the. That COVID stayed down in our community. With all that said, thank you. And that's all the rest of my update there. Yes, Ms. Pi.
The school district wanted you to announce EBA. I think it's EBT.
Yeah. So the, yeah, I had it on my other notes. I forgot those. I apologize. The school district actually is working to identify, have identified. All of the underprivileged and kids that have qualified for free meals in our community. Those families will receive an EBT card from the state. This is a state program. And they're utilizing the Palm Springs Unified School District numbers. And so if you receive an EBT card, this is, I think it's up to over three hundred dollars that you'll receive for groceries for your family. So look for that. If you receive one and you want to know more information about it, you can contact Palm Springs Unified School District. And they can explain to you what it's used for, but I believe it's a little over three hundred dollars per family that qualifies. And it's going to be a monthly stipend for your food. So look forward to that. All right. Yes, go ahead.
Memorial Day, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All my, I wrote down a bunch of notes. I left them on my desk at City Hall. I'm using my home office today, so I apologize. We as a city have made a decision, obviously with the COVID nineteen, that large gatherings cannot happen. And because of that, Memorial Day this year will be canceled. At the park. With that said, we will be running a video of our past Memorial Day on channel seventeen or YouTube. Channel, am I getting all that correct? And those will be available for you to, to watch. Again, if you choose to go to the memorial park, you know, social distancing and wearing masks are enforced. There will be no ceremony this year. Did I forget anything else? Anyone? So thank you. Thank you for helping me off there. With that, we'll move to the administrative calendar. Item number two, which is appointment to the planning commission to fill vacancy for unexpired term. Our city clerk, Gerald Soriya.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So yes, currently there is one vacancy that exists on the planning commission. Pursuant to the municipal code, if a vacancy occurs on a commission other than by expiration of term, then the vacancy is filled by. Appointment of the council member who originally appointed the commissioner that's being replaced. So accordingly, that's councilmember Betts. That concludes my staff report. I'll turn it over to councilmember Betts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, this is a problem with a lot of very qualified applicants and I'm going through all these very carefully. I want to make sure I make a right decision. I looked at the calendar. And I see that we have time between now and the next council meeting. Before we can make an appointment and still make the next planning commission meeting. The calendar works out such that. They're not going to miss a meeting if I take a little bit more time. So I think that's what I'm going to do is take a little bit more time, study these. I got a couple more people I want to contact and I, I've just got to try and make a decision here. So I'll have something by the next meeting.
All right, do a motion to the table to the next meeting.
Motion to continue to the next meeting.
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor. And if I'd like to throw in a comment if I could here real quick. Our role as a council in theory is to advise and consent to appointments. And I have to ask, how can we possibly consent if we don't know who the appointment nominee is until the minute before we take a vote? Very uncomfortable with that. And so I would like to suggest that at a minimum. The, the name should come with the agenda along with the application. And we got all of the applications in this time around, but we didn't. We don't know and, and apparently councilmember Betts hasn't chosen one yet, which is fine. We got all of the applications there, but. The person as well who is being nominated should appear before this body so that we and the public have a better chance to vet them. I feel very uncomfortable just. Voting on a name that's thrown out two seconds before we're supposed to take the vote. So. I would like to suggest that in the future, if we don't have time to do it at this one. That we revise our procedures to require that the council member making an appointment. Do so in enough time so that it appears on the agenda prior to taking action at that time. That's all I've got.
Mr. Mayor, how to respond?
Sure.
I will certainly put the name out there in time for it to be included in the agenda packet, if that's what you wish. That's not a problem with me. Just a little bit of background, you know, we go years with. Tradition guiding council actions and new suggestion comes along to handle it differently. I'm not opposed to that at all. Generally, it's been unless somebody had some wild objections about the nominee, we kind of deferred each council member to put who they wanted there and didn't get into a big. You know, back and forth, basically leaving it up each council member to decide. And the advise and consent part came if there was somebody that. Somebody felt very strongly against. And we've had that happen and. So, but it's, it's still there. It's not that we don't have it, but I don't see any problem with. Putting the name out there and I will do that on this nomination. So you have plenty of time to, to review them.
All right, that's not our current procedure. You don't have to, but if you would, that'd be appreciated and then we'll revise those. Gary and Jan, I believe you work on the subcommittee for. Council policies. So I'll put you two on that to, to work on that. With that said, do we have any public comments, Jerome?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Jen, Robert, do you have any comments? All right, motion to continue. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Gardner.
Aye.
Councilmember Pi.
Aye.
Mayor Proton Griffith.
Aye.
And Mayor Max.
Aye.
Item number three is an ordinance amending the Desert Hot Springs Municipal Code to clarify and solidify. The intent of the city council for recovery of attorney fees for use and abatement. And this will be our city attorney, Ms. Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The item that you have before you. We actually stumbled across this, but it's actually been a book since two thousand and one. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The item that you have before you, um, we actually stumbled across this, but it's actually been on the books since 2001. And it, it will merely make clear what is already kind of understood to be on the books. As you can see, it's just a one word change. Uh, currently the ordinance reads the prevailing party in any proceeding conducted pursuant to this chapter, which is, uh, a very, it's very, very limited. That chapter is very small. We want to expand that to title, um, which encompasses all of code enforcement. Uh, will be a title to, entitled to attorney's fees. It's pretty much a cleanup ordinance. If you have any questions or anything like that, I'm here to answer questions. If not, um, I think it's pretty, uh, explained in the staff report and in the recitals of the ordinance.
I'll mute myself there. Do you have any public comments?
We have none.
All right, Mr. Gardner?
Yes, quick question, uh, Jennifer. Um, we're not recovering attorney's fees on these currently?
We do recover attorney's fees on these currently. Uh, we've always used this and, and actually, uh, going to, to recover the attorney's fees. Um, it's, it's never been a problem, but when I looked at it, uh, I saw this and wanted to make sure, uh, you know, to clarify it.
Okay, um, and just to ballpark figure of how often and how much we do expend and how much we could possibly recover. Cause in a lot of cases, uh, with these, uh, nuisance abatements, the, the reason it's a nuisance abatement, it's a nuisance. And because the owner has no money to take care of the property. And so then we go in and get an order and we then, um, clean it up and we send them the bill for it. And then we send them a bill for attorney's fees on top of that. Is, is it feasible to even collect? I'm not opposed. In fact, I'm, I'm all in favor, but I'm just wondering if they were actually going to get anything out of it.
Uh, it, it, what happens is, is, uh, good question. Well, what happens is, uh, we, we do collect. Um, eventually, uh, it becomes like a lien on their property. And so whenever they refinance or anything like that, the city will get paid. Um, attorney's fees are reasonable. They have to be under the state of California. Um, city attorney's fees in general are much lower than, uh, a regular private attorney, something like that. So, uh, they tend to be reasonable attorney's fees. Um, but we, we came across this. I said, you know what? Let's just clean this up. And, and it's been on the books forever. That way it's always been the intent of the city council, as I could tell, uh, to recover, uh, nuisance abatement costs and attorney's fees for nuisance abatement actions.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Betts?
Yeah, just a quick question here. Um, and then I have a chance to ask Jennifer, but I've been looking through this for the strike through and the highlight for what's changing. I'm looking at the ordinance. Can you point to me?
Sure.
The language change, the one word that I can't seem to find in all this?
Sure, of course. It's in section four of the ordinance. That is page one, two. It, it starts at the bottom of page three and it is the top of page four where it says the prevailing party in any proceeding conducted pursuant to this title, which is underlined, um, and bolded rather than chapter.
You know, there it is. Thank you. I found it. So, um, next question, and I'm just curious. Do we have any liability, potential liability on this one for somebody coming back? No?
No.
Make that really clear to everybody out there. Don't even try it, right?
None.
Okay, thanks. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Jan, Robert, anything? All right, uh, anyone want to make a motion?
I move we adopt the ordinance as presented.
I'll second.
There's a motion by Mr. Gardner, a second by Mr. Griffith. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Betts?
Aye.
Councilmember Gardner?
Aye.
Councilmember Pye?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Griffith?
Aye.
And Mayor Metz?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. And this is the first reading and introduction of an ordinance of the city council. Um, the city of Desert Hot Springs amending section 4.04.070 of the Desert Hot Springs Municipal Code to clarify and solidify the intent of the city council for recovery of attorney's fees for nuisance abatement. The ordinance will return on June 2nd for second reading and adoption.
Thank you. Item number four is a city council meetings, uh, meeting schedule for summer, winter 2020. Mr. Soriello?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so the city council traditionally, um, will go dark or, um, will cancel meetings during the summer and winter seasons. Um, so for this year, staff proposes similar to last year, um, that the council go dark, um, July 21st, August 4th, August 18th. Um, and then in the winter, December 15th, and then January 5th, um, 2021. Additionally, um, elect, as you know, election, the election will be on November 3rd of this year. Um, if the council also chooses to go dark on that day as well, um, then that's up to the council. That concludes my staff report.
Any public comments?
No, Mr. Mayor.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the schedule as is adding November 3rd, uh, as an additional day of, uh, going dark.
Second.
There is a second by Mr. Gardner. Ms. Pye, do you have something you want to say?
Yes, um, not knowing what is going to happen. If, if something comes up with, um, COVID-19, the mayor, um, this.
You can call an emergency meeting, yep.
Pardon me?
We can call an emergency meeting if we need to.
Okay, I wonder if enough of us aren't here. If say someone travels, would that fall under your, um, purview?
As far as?
I don't know. It's something.
I can, I can call an emergency meeting. Um, Jennifer, would you, uh, pipe in here? But I believe that, uh, as we've done before, we'll have you do the posting requirements or whoever may be gone at that time to make sure that we can, uh, have you included in the meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Hey, anyone else? Brad, Russ?
Yeah, I'm, um, I'm looking at this. You got three meetings in a row. You're going a month and a half or more without a meeting and starting in July. And it seems a bit, uh, of a critical time and where we really don't know what's coming or what's not coming. And, um, I, I just think it's too long. If it was just August, I could maybe handle that. Um, and I do appreciate the mayor putting November 3rd in there, which, uh, gives me pause to, to vote for it. I'm just, I just think it's too long. I, I think we take July 1st, 21st out there would be a good idea. And that at least give us some indication between the adoption of the budget and another month to look and see, you know, how things are shaking out.
City manager?
Uh, we did have a plan and the reason why we were asking for this period of time is because we were moving from our other facilities into the new city hall during that period of time. And we are going to need that extra, um, time to be able to get everything done. Um, but if in fact that there is any significant changes in finance, or if there's any reason for emergency meeting, we will definitely call one. And then, as you know, you get regular updates from me every week. And we will include finance updates every week, uh, during that period of time. So you can see where we're at. So there's no dark area.
Mr. Mayor, this includes the weekly meetings. We're not, uh, you know, with the staff?
This, this is just, this is just a calendar for council meetings.
All right, I'll, um, go with the flow.
Any other comments? All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Betts?
I'm gonna wait till the rest of the vote comes out.
Councilmember Gardner?
Aye.
Councilmember Pye?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Griffith?
Aye.
Mayor Metz?
Aye.
Councilmember Betts?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, number five is discussion item. Um, now I just want to clarify this with everybody. This is the discussion item only. Two councilmembers have asked, does this come on as a discussion to actually put it onto another agenda for full discussion? A discussion would be on spa hotel ordinance and I'll give it over to Mr. Gardner and Griffith. I don't know who wants to fight over, who's going to explain this.
Mr. Mayor, point of order, please?
Yes.
So I'm looking at the agenda item and says, consider whether to place an item on a future agenda regarding discussion of spa hotel ordinance. And I don't think, and I, the ordinance that we got is just whether or not to put the agenda on. Isn't that correct?
That's what we're asking.
We don't have, we don't have any materials in advance on this one.
You, you won't.
Okay, so I'm, you know, I'm having the same concern here. I've had nothing to study ahead of time.
There's no discussion or, or action to be taken on this except for to place it on an agenda for future, future review.
Got it. I'll go with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, and councilmember Betts is, Betts is correct. There is nothing to discuss at this point except whether we want to move forward with the development of a future ordinance. And, uh, Mayor Proton Griffith and I have, uh, become concerned as have, uh, I believe you have too, councilmember Betts. That, uh, we're losing our small boutique spas to rehabs. And, um, we are scheduled to lose another one. Uh, it came up during the planning commission meeting this last, uh, this last week. Um, and so that is why, uh, Mr. Griffith and I just like to move forward to direct the city attorney to, uh, bring us some options, uh, for an ordinance to preserve our spas. And at this point, I don't know what that looks like. I don't know if any of us know what that could possibly look like. And so we will have to work with our city attorney to develop something to preserve our spas. Um, I don't know the best way to go down that route. There's options we can take, but we don't know what those are. So, uh, under our council procedures, the only way we can move forward to have the city attorney start drafting something and developing some options is to take a vote on whether to direct her to proceed. So that's what we're doing today. And that's what I would like to see my fellow council members support. Thanks.
Mayor, when it's time, I'd like to make a motion.
Mr. Griffith? Mr. Griffith?
Yeah, okay. So I, I just want to give a little bit more background and depth so people who aren't aware of certain things have a better understanding. And hopefully councilmember Betts, this'll give you a little more information than what was on the paper or not on the paper. Um, so just for, for general informational purposes, you know, this is, Desert Hot Springs was founded on, because of the hot springs. And, uh, day spas were a big part. At one point, most of us know there was over 120 spas in this city. And we've gradually watched them dwindle. Uh, several years ago, the predecessor to the Desert Hot Springs Hotelers Association, a group was formed called SOS. It was Save Our Spas. And the reason was that these, uh, there was a small renaissance of small, uh, boutique hotels, people buying them. Maria Elise was in, involved in this. And, uh, they were alarmed at how many of the spas were being converted either into residential, mostly residential living, um, or apartments. And so the, the formation of the group was to preserve, uh, our spa heritage and our spa population. And, uh, that eventually gave way into the Desert Hot Springs Hotelers Association. What we're seeing again is we're seeing another round of losing our spa. So we've already lost one boutique spa last year, uh, Living Waters. And now there's a potential of another one that is being considered for a rehabilitation facility. My concern with all of this is that we're going to lose our heritage. Um, right now we are down to, you know, we had 120 some, we're down to eight boutique spas, uh, hotel and spas. And what I don't want to see is I don't want to see them dwindled to where we have nothing. Uh, the Coachella Valley is a big tourist destination and TOT traditionally has been a, a good chunk of our tax base. We're not seeing much of it right now, but eventually there will be a resurgence. One of the things that we have that Palm Springs or anybody else in the Coachella Valley does not have is we have the hot springs water. And there is a great movement to recognize the health benefits of that. Um, I have a conference meeting, I, I believe it's tomorrow with the Balneology Association of North America. And the, uh, the, the purpose of that group is to spread, uh, information about the health benefits of bathing in general of water, especially hot springs water with high mineral contents, which we have. You know, we have a very unique resource here that if we are not careful and we're not stewards of it, we're going to lose. I mean, it's, it's, it's the basis of the town's name, Desert Hot Springs. So if we watch our little spas and our little boutique-ins and even the large ones go away, then we lose basically our history. And so I would like to find a way, and you and I, uh, councilmember Betts, we have even discussed this, uh, you know, personally. Um, find a way to protect what we have in some form of preservation, um, whether it's an ordinance or some other mechanism to protect what's left. Because what I don't want is I don't want it to be where we just have a couple of large places and two others. And then everything else is, is either, you know, a new residential or a residential rehabilitation or supportive housing or transitional housing. That, so that's the purpose of this is what I'd like to do is work with staff to pull something, um, together that we can bring forward, look at as a council and say, is this what we want for our city? So that's the purpose of this.
All right, um, Ms. Betts?
Yeah, what's the word? Wholeheartedly? I wholeheartedly support this. I'm really glad you guys, uh, brought this. So, you know, we're going to go to town on this one. Maybe a suggestion for the city attorney, I'm just thinking out loud here is, you know, historical designations seem to have a pretty good, uh, time at, uh, preserving the history of a town and maybe that will work for, um, this as well. Uh, the other thing is, is we, as I understand it now, the planning commission doesn't have to say yes. And, uh, I was a little disappointed that you're shaking their head that they do have to say yes, or you're agreeing with me. Okay, so the, the, um, the planning commission does not have to say yes. And so I hope that our planning commissioners will put the same, uh, concern that we have. I think, I'm pretty sure all the council feels this way, that, you know, down to eight boutique spa hotels is very significant. And I sat on the, uh, Hoteliers' Liaison, I think for six years or something like that. It was happening to be down, uh, through the downturn and the, the Great Recession. And what was common with every one of them was, I don't know why, but we're booked. We're, our weekends are busy. We're surviving. It's taking a little longer to get the bookings, but people are calling and we're filling our hotels. And our boutique spa hotels held up during the, because we mostly have a higher end clientele coming to them. And, uh, so it is a very important revenue source. Uh, I'm great. I'm be looking forward to seeing what you come up with and, um, great job. Yeah, let's go ahead. And my apologies on the, uh, point of order. I just didn't know what we were talking about on this one when we first put it on the agenda, so.
Ms. Pye? Um, I don't think I need to tell you this, but I'd just like to make sure that you, um, talk to Ms. Demings, uh, regarding the general plan.
All right, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
We, oh, go ahead, Russ.
Motion to approve.
All right, motion to approve to put it on another future agenda. This gives the U2 the opportunity to work with staff at this point. Do we have any public comments?
No, Mr. Mayor.
All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Betts?
Aye.
Councilmember Gardner?
Aye.
Councilmember Pye?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Griffith?
Aye.
And Mayor Metz?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, uh, that ends our agenda for this evening and we have a future agenda items to be discussed with the city manager. Do we have anybody else pop in for public comments, Mr. Soriello?
No, we don't.
We do have a special meeting next week on the general plan. Uh, it'll be May 26th, which is next Tuesday at 1:00 PM. The council will hear testimony on the, uh, this will be a public hearing on the general plan and we'll be moving that forward. Um, and then our next council meeting will be on June 2nd. With that said, uh, that is the, this meeting is adjourned and that'll end the recording.